All right, good afternoon. We'll move right into our city council formal meeting for August 27th, 2014. We'll begin this meeting with an invocation. The invocation will be led by Pastor Lovell Bland of the City of Phoenix Employees for Christ. Would everyone please stand?
Let us bow our head and pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this time. Lord, as we begin this council, we pray for your wisdom. Not only your wisdom, but we pray for your peace. We pray that every matter will be resolved, that it will have a peaceful resolution. We pray that you will just see us through this. Let your presence be here. Guide every decision. Let it be guided for the greater good. Not only for the greater good, but to your praise and to your glory. We thank you right now, for you are great and greatly to be praised. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor very much. We'll now do the pledge of allegiance. It will be led by Councilor Vice Mayor Jim Waring.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman DeCiccio.
Here.
Councilwoman Gallego.
Here.
Councilman Gates.
Here.
Councilwoman Noakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilman Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Waring.
Here.
Mayor Stanton.
Here.
Letitia Marquez is our interpreter. Please introduce yourself for the audience.
My name is Letitia Marquez. If you need assistance or translation in Spanish, please contact me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would the city clerk please read the 24 hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances number G-5942, S-41098 through S-41143, and resolutions number 21240 through 21248.
Thank you very much. Councilman Gates, did you have a chance to review the meeting minutes from April 30th, 2014?
Mayor, I have, and I move their approval.
Second.
You have a motion, you have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Can we do the others omnibus or do it individually? Councilman Pastor, have you had a chance to review the formal meeting minutes of May 7th, 2014?
Down here.
I'll get her when she gets back. Vice Mayor, the special meeting of May 7th, 2014?
I haven't, because they haven't given them to me yet. So, we're going to motion, move to continue to September 3rd, 2014.
Second.
We have a motion to continue? Second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That'll move to September 3rd. Councilman Noakowski, formal meeting, May 28th, 2014?
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Councilman Williams, formal meeting, June 4th, 2014?
I'd rather move approval.
Do you have a second? I'll second that. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Councilman Valenzuela, formal meeting, July 2nd, 2014?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Councilman Pastor, have you had a chance to review the formal meeting minutes of May 7th, 2014?
I have. Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Do I have a motion regarding the mayor's boards and commission nominations?
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Motion on the council members board and commission nominations?
Move approval.
Second.
A motion? We have a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And I think we have many boards and commission members that have been waiting patiently so they'd be, provide their services to citizens of the city of Phoenix. I will come to you and we'll swear you in, and then when completed, if you would come behind the dais, and each of the council members would like to say thank you in advance for your services, service to the citizens of Phoenix. So I'll come right on down. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the laws of the state of Arizona, that I will bear true faith and allegiance, do the same, and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of, according to the best of my ability, so help me God. You're official. All right. Go behind, they want to hug or kiss or shake your hand, whatever's appropriate.
I want to hug.
You can hug you if you'd like, whatever you're most comfortable with.
(inaudible). Oh, okay, all right. Your English teacher. Thank you. No worries.
Good to see you.
Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
How are you doing?
Terrific. He put those great messages in the paper. I always do. Good to see you. Thank you for your service. Congratulations. Thank you so much for your service. Thank you for your service. Congratulations.
(inaudible).
I see that. No, that's probably.
I can see you. Gates.
Yes. You look fabulous. You look pretty good.
I want to thank all of the boards and commission members that just were sworn in in advance for their service. Consideration of bid. Many new members of the Mayor's Commission on Disability Issues. That is a very, very active commission. Do we have a motion on item number one? Thank you for your service, and I just want to make a note that Ashley Bridwell, who did a great, great job as chair of that committee, and is, you're not retiring, you're too young to retire, but are moving on to other activities, but thank you for your leadership on that
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Williams and a second. commission. You did a great job. Give her a big round of applause. Are there any cards on item number one? Please stand, Ashley. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next is liquor licenses. I'm looking for the vice mayor, is he around? I caught him at the wrong time.
I guess I'd make a motion.
We make a, yeah, omnibus motion?
Items two through 27, except for 10. Noting that, we need a separate motion to withdraw 10.
Second.
Note that item 10 is withdrawn.
Okay, so items two through 27, noting that item 10 is withdrawn. We have motion in favor. I believe all of the cards that are here are in favor of the proposed items, so the motion is in their favor, so I assume they do not wish to speak. Any comments on members of this council? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next item is item number 28. Staff is recommending disapproval. This is item, this is in District 5, 23 to go. Councilman Valenzuela, how do you wish to proceed, noting that there are, let's see, four cards, including Detective Eric Brendel, who wishes to speak last on the item. You want to hear the cards? You want to hear staff presentation first?
Why don't we go with, so did you say the detective wants to speak last?
Last.
Okay, why don't we go with the staff report? Please.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Denise Archibald with the City Clerk Department. This request is for a new Series 10 license for a convenience store that does not sell gas, doing business as 23 to go. This location was previously licensed for liquor sales as Circo K-158 and is currently operating with an interim permit. Therefore, consideration should be given only to the applicant's personal qualifications. Four letters protesting the issuance of this license have been received and are on file in the office of the city clerk. Staff recommends disapproval of this application based on a police department recommendation for disapproval, neighborhood protests, and the applicant's extensive history of liquor license violations. The applicant has not demonstrated the capability, reliability, and qualifications required to hold and control a liquor license.
Thank you very much. You want to go to the cards now?
We can go to, I'll leave it. I know Mr. Lukowitz is here for the applicant. Mr. Lukowitz, would you prefer to go to the cards, or would you like to speak first?
I didn't sign a card, no.
Oh.
I am here in appearance on behalf of the clerk.
Yeah, I don't have Mr. Lukowitz's cards, but if you wish to speak, now would be a good time, and if not, that's fine too. You wish to speak?
I not only didn't sign a card, but I'm part of hearing. What did you say?
I apologize. The councilman has invited you to speak first, if you'd like, as a representative of the applicant, and if you'd like to speak, now would be the time to do so.
Thank you, sir. Jerry Lukowitz, 2600 North Central, Suite 1775, appearing on behalf of the applicant. Approximately two weeks ago, I called the councilman's office and told him that the applicant himself is in Jordan, celebrating the Ramadan. He will be back here next week, September 6th, as it is, as the holiday is now over. We, in addition, asked for the continuance at that time, and realized that not only the police, but there were three neighborhood groups, I believe, excuse me, who registered protests. I appreciate that. I honor them with their appearance. However, we wrote each one of them as well, a letter stating that we would want a continuance until the applicant himself would be returning to the states and could meet with them, so it would be face to face. It wouldn't just be an application and a record. So therefore, we did ask for a continuance, and we're asking for it now. My last check with Ms. Archibald was that it would be on September 17th.
Mayor, members of the council, the request was for any time after September 6th, which would, the next meeting would be September 17th.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman, what's your desire?
I would like to go to the cards.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Lukowitz.
Thank you, Mr. Lukowitz.
I beg your pardon?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to go to the cards here. Thank you, sir.
So right now, there's no motion on the table, including a motion for continuance, so I'm going to allow the speakers to talk about the liquor license itself. Okay. Paul Ennis, representing the neighborhood?
Mayor, council members, my name's Paul Ennis. I live actually just out of District 5 and District 4, but at 2202 West San Miguel, which is less than half a mile from this location. I'll let the city staff report speak for itself, and the police report, the recommendation to deny this. As any of you know that have been on the council for a long period of time, Simpson Neighborhood, for 19 years, has been working with the city, working with the state, working with whoever will work with us, to improve our neighborhood, to keep it as strong as it is, and I very seldom come down and oppose a liquor license, but after reviewing all the facts in this case, and the applicant's history, I really feel this would be a detriment. I, I never received a letter from Mr. Lukowitz asking for a continuance, and I definitely think that since they first started the application process in July, and Mrs. Lukowitz has the opportunity to meet with anybody, that it should not have a continuance. I'd also say, any meetings with them would be fruitless, because the neighborhoods aren't going to go against the police department's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sherri Dudek? Followed by Pam Fitzgerald, also opposed.
Good afternoon. I'm Sherri Dudek. I live at 3005 West Southern Lane, and I'm here representing the Cactus Park Community Alliance. Our alliance represents and works with all the neighborhoods in the Cactus Park Police Precinct, the 30 square mile area, and we have reviewed all the materials, and at our board meeting decided because of this applicant's history, that alone more than vacated the fact that he wants to come in and be right near a school. We reviewed the police department's review, report, and agree with them totally. We would like this, we'd like no continuance, we'd like to go ahead and vote, and, and have a denial on this. The neighbors have come out, the community has all come together, and we don't feel that another meeting would make any difference. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Fitzgerald is next, followed by Barbara Smith.
Okay, Honorable Mayor Stanton and council members, my name is Pam Fitzgerald, and I'm president of the Washington Park Neighborhood Association. Our neighborhood association has been registered with the city since 2006, and our boundaries are 15th Avenue to the freeway, and Bethany Home to Glendale. Mr. Valenzuela can confirm that we're a very active community. I will start by saying that speaking to you all is making me a nervous wreck, but the gravity of this troublesome liquor license application forces me to come forward and represent the Washington Park Neighborhood Association, which is protesting this application. The neighborhood has changed drastically over the last 40-plus years that I have lived there, and it's not for the better. We're a neighborhood that is struggling and hanging on by its fingernails. We have the ability to be a great neighborhood. We're centrally located. We are the home to some of the city's greatest assets, the Washington Park Activity Center, Washington Park, the Dog Park, the newly renovated tennis center, A+ High School, and the soon-to-be-finished light rail extension. Or we can slide very easily into a blight-infested, crime-filled area, which none of us can be proud of. We ask that you follow the recommendations of the staff in Phoenix PD and disapprove this application. They have carefully and thoroughly reviewed this applicant's business practices and his record of violations. We ask that you support our efforts to provide a clean, safe community to live in. We need businesses that will be an economic asset to the revitalization of this old neighborhood. Please hear what your staff in Phoenix PD are recommending, and vote no on this application. Help us continue to improve this great central Phoenix neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You did a great job. Barbara Smith is next, followed by Detective Brendel.
I'm Barbara Smith from the Washington Park Neighborhood. Am I allowed to say I went to look at one of his other stores? Well, I went to look at one of his other stores at 35th and Greenway.
You may.
It was in a nice, it was in a nice strip mall, but he was on the end, the windows were painted black, you could not see in. There were neon signs only showing liquor. I understand, he said he was going to have food, but I wouldn't want one of our children in our neighborhood going near the place, and I really wouldn't want it in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Detective?
Mayor, members of the council, Detective Eric Brendel, Phoenix PD, DeSarizan Precinct. I'll be very brief with my presentation regarding the liquor license application. The Phoenix Police Department shares the same concerns as all the neighborhood groups with regards to the applicant's ability to responsibly control a liquor license. The applicant currently owns the same series liquor license at two locations in both the city of Phoenix and Glendale. Over the past 10 years, there have been 10 separate dates of violations pertaining to liquor violations, resulting in 20 charges totaling $8,750 in fines. The majority of these violations all pertain to the sale to underage buyers. The types of violations suggest that the employees have minimal supervision and/or oversight or inadequate training, both which are the responsibility of the owner. The both concerns are still present in this application here. Neither the applicant nor the agent plan to physically be present at the location. As of this date, there hasn't even been a manager identified to oversee the operations at the business. Based on the history of the violations at Mr. Abdeen's liquor establishments, we feel he has not demonstrated the responsibility, reliability, and capability to hold another liquor license. For these reasons, we recommend denial.
Thank you very much, Detective. Any questions for Detective Brendel? Thank you for your testimony. Thanks for coming down. Also opposed and not wishing to speak is Scott Fister and Patricia Dowd. Councilman, what's your pleasure?
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate everyone coming out to speak up. I also appreciate Mr. Lukowitz, you coming out to represent Mr. Abdeen, who unfortunately can't be here today. You know, look, all of these neighborhood issues are incredibly important, and especially when it comes to a liquor license, to our neighborhood leaders, I think, I don't think anything brings them out more than these types of, these types of agenda items, and I'll speak for these particular neighborhood leaders who are incredibly active in the community, and not only District 5, but District 4 and District 1, actually. So thank you very much for what you do for, for all of us out there in our, in our neighborhoods. Now, in spite of what the detective mentioned, in spite of the 10 violations and the 20 charges that have been brought up, and the thousands of dollars that have been collected in fines, Mr. Lukowitz, I want you to know that I personally contacted our neighborhood leaders and asked how they would feel about a continuance. I think part of, part of getting this right is showing a pragmatic approach and strong leadership skills, and, you know, from what this sounds like, this is a strong opposition and, from, from our neighborhoods, and, you know, I mean, you look at the police report, and I don't, I don't think there's much to argue there. With that said, I feel like I, the right thing to do here is to, is to make a motion to, to support staff recommendation in disapproving this liquor license.
Second.
All right, so a motion from the councilman, disapprove, recommended disapproval based upon the issue staff brought up in their presentation. We have a second. Any additional comments by this council?
Mayor?
Councilman?
I would just say that I'm going to support this. I am very familiar with the problems we've had at 35th and Greenway, and I would not wish that on another neighborhood.
Thank you very much for, Councilman. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Next item is item 32C, I believe. Councilman Waring, it's asked for individual vote. Do we have a motion by another member of the council?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on 32C. Any cards? Any comments? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so the item passes on a seven to two vote. Next item, I believe, is AA, I think. Move approval, item AA. We have a motion on A. Do we have a second?
Second.
Diane Barker, you provide testimony after two minutes on AA in the payment ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is item 32AA, and it has to do its back-ending for the golf course. We had a citizen speak to you previously about his idea that the city really should dissolve of the golf courses, and I just wanted to call the attention that we are paying $38,000 for four golf ball dispensers. Now, okay, and, you'll call me for AD?
Yes, unless you want to do it right now. You can't, go right ahead.
I'll do it. Yes. Okay, AD is $72,300 to the office of, that's the state auditor general.
Correct.
And that's for an economic and fiscal impact analysis audit of the Phoenix Convention Center. I believe that we, we share receipts with the state, the city of Phoenix does on that. And my request is, is that the city, if it hasn't done it, will put that audit on a transparent website with the finance department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Fair request, yeah. Yeah, okay, thank you. So maybe you got a motion on both items? AA and AD?
I'd like to vote no on AA.
Let's do AA separately, okay?
And we already made the motion, so.
The motion is in favor of AA. Was there a second?
Second.
There was a second? So on AA, this is the golf ball dispensers. Roll call.
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman, now, can I ask you a question? I apologize.
Is Park staff here?
Is anyone here to talk about AA?
financing plan for 2015? Going once? Going twice? That hearing is now closed. We'll now move on to G ordinances, S ordinances, and resolutions. City Clerk and Vice Mayor, are we ready for ordinances, resolutions?
Just one moment, Mayor.
Okay.
Sorry. All right, thirty-two C.
Vice Mayor, it's your show.
One thing.
Yeah, pull it, please.
All right, so I moved that items thirty-one through eighty-six being ordinances number G, five-nine-four-two, S dash forty-one, oh-nine-eight through S dash forty-one, one-four-three, and resolutions twenty-one, twenty-four-zero through twenty-one, twenty-four-eight be adopted, except items thirty-two C, AA, AD, AS, AZ, BA, item forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-four, forty-five, fifty-five, fifty-eight, sixty-four, sixty-six, sixty-nine, and seventy-two. And noting, actually, I should say noting that items thirty-two AZ and thirty-two BA are to be withdrawn and that items forty-one and forty-five are as corrected, be adopted.
That's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion, we have a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, next item is item thirty-two C, I believe. C. Councilman Waring, is that for individual vote? Do we have a motion by another member of the council?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on thirty-two C. Any cards? Any comments? Roll call.
DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so the item passes on a seven to two vote. Next item, I believe, is AA, I think. Move approval item AA. We have a motion on A. Do we have a second?
Second.
Diane Barker, you provide testimony after two minutes on AA in the payment ordinance.
Thank you Mayor and Council. This is item thirty-two AA and it has to do, it's a back ending for the golf course. We had a citizen speak to you previously about his idea that the city really should dissolve of the golf courses and I just wanted to call the attention that we are paying thirty-eight thousand for four golf ball dispensers. Now, okay, and you'll call me for AD?
Yes, unless you want to do it right now.
I'll do it.
Go right ahead.
Yes, okay, AD is seventy-two thousand three hundred to the office of, that's the state auditor general.
Correct.
And that's for an economic and fiscal impact analysis audit of the Phoenix Convention Center. I believe that we, we share receipts with the state, the city of Phoenix does on that. And my request is, is that the city, if it hasn't done it, will put that audit on a transparent website with the finance department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Fair request, yeah. Okay, thank you. So maybe you got a motion on both items? AA and AD?
I'd like to vote no on AA.
Let's do AA separately, okay.
And we already made the motion, so.
The motion is in favor of AA. Was there a second?
Second.
There was a second. So on AA, this is the golf ball dispensers. Roll call.
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman, now, can I ask you a question? I apologize.
Is Park staff here?
Is anyone here to talk about AA? If not, we can hold that item until we get them here.
We can hold that.
The manager, what do you think?
Oh, I can, if you have a question, I can try to answer it myself, too.
What's the question, Councilman?
The question is, do we actually make a profit off of the dispensers or not?
Thank you Mayor. Councilman Noakowski, this item is paying for golf ball dispensers which go to the ranges and the ranges, we do charge people for those. This is a recommendation by the council-approved consulting firm that was hired to help us make, increase revenue at the golf courses. So that's what this is related to and Mr. Burke is here.
Jim, would you like to correct your boss?
Very often, but not today.
Councilor, did I answer your question honestly?
My question is, how much revenue are we expected to make off this, off these four dispensers?
I don't know the exact return, but I expect that this will pay for itself in a couple of years because right now, these are just open buckets and people can take as many as they want. This will be coming and require them to pay, require to get a coupon from us and then go to a coin machine and it dispenses an exact number of balls. So we're seeing it on all the other private courses and their rates are up, so we would expect a pretty quick turnaround on this. I can get you an exact expectation on that.
Can, Mayor? Councilman DeCiccio, please.
And then, the revenue off these golf balls is approximately nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand a year. I mean, what do, what do you make on this?
I don't have that number in my head. I think it's, for all the courses, it's probably about that, but each course has a slightly different rate of return at the range.
All right, so we have, any other questions on AA? With that, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, so that item passes on an eight to one vote. Next item is AD. Do we have a motion on AD?
Move to approve item AD.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any cards or comments? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, next item, Vice Mayor?
Move to approve item AS.
Second. The motion is second on AS. Councilman DeCiccio, have comments on AS?
Just a quick comment in dealing with the parks. The city of Phoenix votes on many of these expenses. This is a, an expense just basically to provide infill mix and soil, but what's not happening, and this is more of a message to parks, because if we're voting on things that are, most people would consider to be mundane expense items, those items that deal with parking meters at our parks should also be coming to the full city council for at the very least direction and an opinion of whether or not we should be imposing that on our public. So if we can vote on these types of things at the, at the city council, we should also be able to vote on major policy issues, at the very least giving direction to the Parks Board. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much and I think I've asked the city attorneys of office to provide legal analysis to every single council member on the issues that Councilman DeCiccio and others have brought up about the role of Parks Board versus council so that we get clarity on that issue.
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, yes, it's, the charter provision itself, it's actually in Chapter Twenty-three, Section Two, provides that it's within the purview for the Parks Board to review and approve all charges except for fees for golf courses, tennis courts, and swimming pools, in which case they make a recommendation to this council for approval. Other than that, it's within the purview of the board as provided in the city charter.
Mayor, just as a follow-up, that doesn't mean that the council can't bring it up and talk about it and bring it up to a policy and give recommendations to the Parks Board. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, that's correct. The council can make recommendations, but ultimately, under the charter, it's within the purview of the Parks Board.
Right, but what I, but the comments that I made were directed at this council should lay a position as exactly where they feel that the city should be heading in that direction as well. It is also a policy decision.
All right. Do you have anything else to add? Okay, thank you very much. So the Councilman DeCiccio made comments on AS. Any additional comments on AS? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, next item, Vice Mayor?
Move to approve item forty.
Sorry, move to approve item forty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number forty. Ms. Barker, do you have comments on item number forty? This is acceptance of the Homeland Security Grant Program funds.
Yeah, thank you Mayor and Council. What this is, is five and a half million dollars coming from our federal homeland security and I was particularly interested in this and have read a little more about it. It may not be under, the reason why I initially wanted to speak was to help out for training for the mentally ill in light of the fact that we had the shooting of Michelle, mentally ill woman, and the chief, Garcia, indicated at the recent panel that he was for more training of the police. The bottom line is, these are grants for training for homeland security and terrorism. Okay, so there were three different ones for 2014 and if it doesn't fit in with this particular item to help out the mentally ill, then I'd like to have management look at this to see if in fact they can move some of these funds to another program so that we can get that needed training money. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barker. Leonard Clark, did you just testify on this item?
Thank you Mayor and Councilmembers. This is item forty, yes, okay, just want to make sure. I was just concerned because in light of all the things that have been happening, I'm just asking that you all on the council, make sure you take a very balanced approach because homeland security, we're going to get grants, they're going to help with the security of our citizens, but on the other side of it, we have been seeing in our zeal to protect our citizens, that we've been going overboard. We just have revelations coming out from the Snowden, I guess, files that the NSA has been using, letting local law enforcement, I guess, as it were, have its own private Google called IC reach. And you are probably correct when you say, Mr. Clark, because I don't see the specifics. It does say there's, how this money is going to be applied individually in the city, so that is my due diligence. I messed up there because I'm sure you probably have it in the, the other printouts, where this money is exactly going, because I'm, I know we need it, we have ISIS out there, we have all these terrorist organizations, but at the same time, without a declared war, we still have our civil rights and I'm a little, I'm actually very concerned about what's going on with all of this money coming in to homeland security. I don't even like the term the homeland, it sounds like something out of Germany in the nineteen thirties. I like our country is a better term, but, but I'm just concerned because, you know, this was just released and I think that there's been a wall between the federal and the state has been breached. We want to catch the criminals, but how do we protect the rights of our individual citizens? So I actually like all of you guys, but that's besides the point. I really believe that you're going to look at it and try to come up with the right decision, but I just don't think people should be, we just hand the money out and not know what's, where it's going. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so we have, we have no additional cards on that item. Any comments by the council? Roll call.
Mayor.
Oh, please, I'm sorry, Danny, Councilman Valenzuela, I apologize.
Mayor, can we get, because I do have a couple of comments, but can we get someone from staff just to briefly, you know, talk about the funds?
Manager, that's a fair request, of course.
Our emergency and homeland security manager, Kevin Cockburner, is here.
Mayor and Council, the Urban Area Security Initiative grant that we're speaking of is based on threat, vulnerability, and consequence. It's designed to strengthen urban areas, was formed after nine-eleven. The, the basis, basis of the program funds our terrorism liaison program which feeds our fusion center. It also provides for hardening of our facilities. It looks at, again, as I said before, threat, vulnerability, and consequence. The money is regional, it's not Phoenix only. The Urban Area Security Initiative is made up of all of the emergency management, law enforcement, and fire agencies in Maricopa County and parts of Penal County. It is governed by a board which I am the coordinator for and the way the projects are picked is, there are two chairpeople that manage a subcommittee. One of the subcommittees is the rapid response team and building capability for rapid response in case of a, of a disaster. Also, chemical, nuclear, and biological response is in that. There is a, a group of infrastructure protection that looked at projects for protecting the infrastructure and there's a group of emergency management professionals that look at projects that support response, recovery, and resilience. And, and then the other item that's on the agenda is the State Homeland Security Grant Program. And again, that comes out of the central region, is administered by the state, it's done by project and voted on by a board. And that's how we wound up with our share of the, of this particular project that sits before you to accept the funds. My office is the administrating office for the grant program. So by allowing us to take the funds in, my office can distribute those funds and the grant pays overhead for two employees to manage this fund as well.
Thank you Mayor. I'd like to, I'll just make a, a comment and I'll make a motion to approve. I want to thank Chief Cockburner and the entire, Chief Kevin Cockburner, our emergency manager, but also our fire chief, Chief Kara Cockburner, for her leadership and on, on not only the grants but throughout the fire service in general and also Chief Kuscheck who just handed the reins over to Chief Cockburner recently. I had the opportunity to travel to DC in the, each of the last two years with both Chief Kuscheck and this year with Chief Cockburner and, and to see both of our, of these gentlemen, these advocates in Washington DC working with FEMA to really talk about the importance of, of these grant monies right here, not only for Phoenix but throughout the valley. It, it's not only impressive, but, you know, obviously it's very important. I'm honored to have had the opportunity to advocate alongside with you. I too, it's a pretty personal thing for me. I spent several years on the rapid response team when this became, when this was a new fund right after nine-eleven. So again, I want to thank the Phoenix Fire Department for its leadership and in particular, you Chief Cockburner for, again, stating the case out in DC and, you know, this is going to be, you know, millions of dollars that will obviously go to the right place and, you know, you're, you're making families safer with, with every one of those trips that, that we're making. So with that, I, my motion is to approve.
Second.
I think the city clerk was saying we already made a motion and second, but it's always good to reaffirm.
Second.
Councilman Gallego.
Thank you. Over our recess, District Eight and many other city council districts had a lot of flooding from storm damage and it was great, we were able to use some of the resources that we've gained through grants in the past and as we are very much at the beginning of what will be a long recovery phase, but it was great to have those resources there for folks to make it a very difficult situation a little bit easier. So we had a recovery information center where folks could come in and some of the resources were deployed where people could learn about what, what is available. Unfortunately, not enough for many folks, but we did make it a tough situation a little bit better and I'm glad to have more resources in the future.
Thank you very much. It's a good reminder that the money is not just used for terrorist-type threats, but also natural disasters, et cetera, to support the people of our community. Any other comments or questions? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, next item, Vice Mayor?
Move to approve item forty-one, as corrected.
Motion and a second. Any comments or cards? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Item forty-two, are you?
Move to approve item forty-two.
We have a motion on forty-two, do we have a second?
Bill has comments.
Second.
We have a second. Councilman Gates, comments on item forty-two?
Yes, thank you Mayor. This, this particular item is a, another six-month extension of our contract for copiers, but this is something that we've been looking at on the efficiency subcommittee, that there are some great savings that can be achieved while still providing great services relates to copies and so I will be supporting this, but I really, this should be the last time we're gonna, gonna have one of these extensions because from my understanding, we're talking about significant savings and we need to get to those as soon as possible as, as of course, we always have our eye on, on next year's budget and, and starting to obtain those savings. So with that caveat, I will be supporting the item.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilman, please.
Just, is there a way we can do this for a shorter period of time, maybe do this on a thirty-day, because I was looking to see if this is on a thirty-day contract rather than just allocating a million-three. Is there a way we can do that on this? So that way, it kind of puts the impetus and it puts the pressure on staff to kind of move this along and look for those savings.
The manager?
Thank you Mayor. Councilman DeCiccio, yes, this is structured so it's on a month-to-month for up to six months, but with the amount of savings we believe we will generate, as soon as we have a recommendation for the permanent contract, we'll bring that to you because the sooner we can get that in place, the sooner we can start saving. So it's not a guaranteed six months, but it's a thirty-day, month-to-month rolling contract for up to six months.
So then the one-point-three million that's in here then add for the thirty-day contract that we have, is it, I mean, is it the guaranteed one-point-three million or is it just basically prorated on a month-to-month then?
Our chief financial officer, Neil Young, can discuss that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, I believe the one-point-three million would be for, if the contract was for the entire six months.
Okay.
And so everything would be prorated only during the period that the contract would be actually in effect.
Okay, and then just for future things too, if you, let us know if it's on a thirty-day month-to-month, because it doesn't have that in the description here. It just talks about it being a six-month. I didn't see it in here as a thirty-day, but thanks a lot.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, next item, Vice Mayor?
Move to approve item forty-four.
We have a motion on forty-four, do we have a second?
Second.
The motion is second. Ms. Barker, forty-four.
Some citizens called my attention to this Mayor and Council and it's just that, why Some citizens call my attention to this, Mayor and Council, and it's just that, why can't we pay in-house $22 an hour for some of our employees to do this kind of work?
Thank you very much. Next is Ms. Rogers. Did you wish to provide testimony on this item?
Mayor and Council and attendees, my name is Greta Rogers. This item concerns me because of the financial, the negative financial straits we're in. Thirty-eight million in the shorts ending June 30th, two months ago, is not something to be winked at. Twenty-two, twenty per hour for someone to clean restrooms, that's an unskilled job, is excessive, absolutely off the chart. This city, over the years, has become sucker bait for contractors. They look at who's asking for a bid, and they say, aha, it's the city of Phoenix, we can ramp it up, and don't think they don't. We can't afford this profligacy, and we can't afford $22.20 per hour for someone to clean toilets with a toilet brush and a sanitizer. I recommend that you continue this, and you put it out for bid again, and in the meantime, maybe you guys can go and clean the toilets until a new contract is achieved. This is profligacy, and it's totally unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rogers. Is Tim Serikowski still here? All right, we're done with that item. So, we have a motion. Do we have a motion before?
Mayor?
Yeah.
Councilman, please. Could I ask on this one, though, too? I've got to tell you, I think she's correct on this, and I'd like to get more information on it, if it's okay. Twenty-two bucks an hour is a lot, and generally, when they bid these out, they include all the other benefits and all the other packages in that 22.50 per hour cost. That's still excessive. I mean, that's a, basically, the equivalent of 44, $45,000 per year. I'd like to hold it off just till the next meeting, until we get some more information.
There's been a motion to continue. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
We have motion and a second. All in favor of continuing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimously. Next item, Vice Mayor?
Move to approve item 45, as corrected.
We have motion, do we have a second? Roll call. DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Williams.
Yes.
Waring. Mayor Stanton. Yes. Next item is, I think, 55, is that right? Did we do 55?
Oh, I'm sorry, we did skip, 55 is, moved to approve item 55.
Second.
Like to declare a potential conflict?
We have a motion, we have a second, noting a potential conflict by Councilman Gallego. Roll call. DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. Item 58 is the, is the next item. Item 58 is the receipt of grant money from HeLa River Indian Community as part of the Gaming Compact. As probably everyone in this room knows, Mary Thomas, who was former governor of the, of the HeLa River Indian Community, passed away a few days ago. She was governor of the HeLa River Indian Community from 1994 to 1999, the first woman to serve in that position. In addition to being governor of the HeLa River Indian Community, she was a policy leader statewide and one of the early leaders, the most impactful leaders in the formation of the Gaming Compacts, which created the opportunity for great nonprofits in the city of Phoenix and throughout the Maricopa County to receive those monies. She was an impactful leader in our community, and so before we have a motion and take a vote on this important item, I just want to make sure that we appropriately remember a very, very important woman in Arizona history, Governor Mary Thomas. Let's take a brief moment of silence. All right, thank you everyone for, for doing that. She was bemiss. I think a lot of people up here had a chance to work with, with Mary Thomas. So, item 58, Vice Mayor, do we have motion on item 58?
Move to approve item 58.
Mayor, I wanted to make a comment on that.
Please.
I questioned this, one, because I'm not familiar with some of the programs that were listed, or the tutors program that we have, but I'd also questioned if this had gone through a subcommittee for approval because it's not included in the dialogue and the description. I, this afternoon, found out it did go through a subcommittee, and so I will be supporting it, but in the future, when we write these descriptions, I think it's very important that it lists that it has been reviewed by at least partial of this council.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Any other comments on this item? Roll call. DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. Next item, Vice Mayor?
Move for approval item 64.
We have motion, we have a second. Ms. Barker, did you wish to provide testimony on item number 64?
I'm in favor for Martin Luther King Celebration Committee.
Thank you very much. Roll call. DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. Next item, Vice Mayor?
Move for approval item 66.
Second.
And I think you're declaring a.
I have a potential conflict on item 66, so I'll not be participating.
Thank you. Any comments about item 66? Going once, going twice. Thank you. Roll call.
DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Next item, Vice Mayor is item number 69, I believe.
Move to approve item number 69.
Second.
We have motion, second, 69. Ms. Barker, testimony on 69, Arizona Bridge Independent Living Agreement, please.
Yeah, well, ABEL, it's also known as ABEL, they're the leaders in the community for persons of disabilities. They have a beautiful building that's over at 52nd and Washington, and if you haven't been there, gotten involved with ABEL, it's really something to see. I, I'm always marvel at persons of disabilities, and they look at what they can do, and what they can do to help person of disability to live independently. Sometimes, I just shake my head and think, boy, ABEL body people can sure learn a lesson from some people that have very little to go on, and they do a lot. So, I'm fundamentally in favor of ABEL and what they do, and on this, they're going to be, help evaluate Phoenix dial-a-ride. Boy, if any form of transportation needs an evaluation, I just hope that we, it is dial-a-ride, and what I like to see is the fact that dial-a-ride is actually decreasing in the area. It's a very expensive way to go because more people are learning how to access good transit. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barker. Motion and a second. Roll call, please. DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. Item 72? We have motion on 72.
Item 72.
We have motion and a second. Leonard Clark, do you wish to provide testimony on item 72?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I, I'm hoping I've got it right. It's right across from Turf Paradise. You guys are putting up the fence, because I've often wondered. A lot of my friends, we drive through there, we all, a lot of us that are from Phoenix most of our lives, we've seen that big plot of land, and I've often wondered what's going on with it. So, it's good that you guys are developing it, because I don't know exactly what's going to happen with Turf Paradise, but at least you're taking an active role in making sure something good happens. So, still curious, though. I know a developer lost the land somehow, I guess in the boom or something, couldn't pay the bills, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Gates?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, that, that land's been vacant there for a long time. When I was in high school, Charles Keating was actually the, the one who tried to develop it, and it was unsuccessful, and so as a result, it's been vacant land for many years, and I was approached by some of the homeowners in the, the area there, very concerned about illegal activities, illegal dumping that was going on in that area, and it's state land. And so, I want to tip my hat to Rick Neymark, who put a lot of work into this. We worked with Vanessa Hickman, the State Land Commissioner, and this is a, a great example of cooperation between different levels of government. So, we're going to have that fenced off so that, that the residents in that area are not impacted by these illegal activities and illegal dumping until that property is sold, which I know it will be, and I think it's going to lead to some great development. I know Councilwoman Williams and I have focused on that area together. We've, our boundaries are near there, but for the time being, this is a great example of cooperation. I want to thank staff, and I want to thank the State Land Department for their work on this, and for being responsive to the residents in the area. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Roll call. DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. I think we're on the new business at this point. Can we do omnibus, or do item?
Do an omnibus.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I've got those. You can move to approve items 87 to 102, withholding items 89, 90, and 91.
Second. We have motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimously.
I move approval items 89 and 90. Councilman Gallego has a conflict.
Would like to declare a potential conflict.
Second. We have motion and a second, noting a potential conflict by Councilman Gallego. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimously. Next item, Vice Mayor?
Move for approval item 91.
Second.
Motion, second, 91. Leonard Clark, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members, for letting me speak. My name's Leonard Clark. I just, I, I didn't put support or not support, but I do support this, this thing you're going to pass here, but it just, I was just hoping that you recognize, and our fellow citizens recognize, how quick the telecommunications industry, the broadband providers, all of the fights that have been going on, this organization that is requiring that you approve the new license, I guess, arrangement because they're buying up the other ones, Level Three Communications, formerly Global Crossing, another huge item. This organization, what, the second-largest optics fiber provider, very powerful type of product to have, because you're putting in the last mile, mile or two to people's homes. The only thing I would bring up is, not to take away from the CEO, Mr. Story, sounds like a great CEO, hardworking man, he's finally turning a profit for this corporation, is, I'm just concerned because, in fairness to the corporation, it hasn't been litigated. I'm just a little nervous because they have been implicated in helping out the NSA. They were taking people's emails from Yahoo and Microsoft, or I forgot the other large email provider, and they were, I guess, apparently, allegedly, were helping to listen in on Americans, to help the NSA listen on American stuff. But other than that, hey, I know we got to go with the flow, but another consolidation of communications going on, and this is, I just wanted to say, come up here and say, as a citizen, that is pretty awesome to know that this is the second-largest corporation, I believe, worldwide of fiber optics cable and the last mile of infrastructure, because that's where it really, the pedal hits the metal there, or whatever, for this. Thank you.
All right, all in favor? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passage unanimously. Any other business for this council?
I'm sorry, Mayor, we moved, we have to withdraw item 94.
Okay, motion to withdraw, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned.